Okay, we are at the top of the hour. It is seven o'clock. So I would like to convene the May 24th, 2021 Dublin City Council meeting. Good evening and welcome. Given the current pandemic conditions as allowed by the state legislature, we continue to conduct our public meetings virtually to maintain the safety of council staff and residents. You can access the live stream on the city's website or on YouTube. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to city council by our communications public information staff during the meeting. We certainly want to accommodate all public input to the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments on public business. Yes, that you refrain from inappropriate comments. I would like to add to that, that I believe we will have one more virtual Dublin City Council meeting. And then we will be all set to return to full in-person meetings. So if you'll just endure one more of these after tonight with us, we will look forward to seeing all of you in person and celebrating the opportunity to be together. With that, I see Homer has magically appeared on my screen and would ask that he lead us in the fun.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Homer. Okay, we have a few special presentations this evening. And we're going to start with our future city Ohio region winners, Evan and Reed Spielberg and Emily and Alex Carr. And you know, this is near and dear to many city council folks' hearts as we are all interested in the future of cities. So we have a proclamation for you and then ask if you would like to make some comments. Or Evan and Reed and Emily and Alex, are you with us?
Yes, we are here.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to read a proclamation and then we'll give you. So proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Dublin Remote Learning Academy Future City Team, vast exploration of the cosmos through Orbital Residency or VECTOR, won first place in the Ohio Region Future City Competition in February 2021. And whereas the team of Evan Spielberg, Emily Carr, Reed Spielberg, and Alex Carr met weekly typically over Zoom to learn about city planning and engineering concepts and brainstorm solutions on how a city of at least 100 years in the future would address the challenges of the 2021 theme "Living on the Moon", in order to provide a sustainable and enjoyable community for its residents. And whereas sponsored by Discover E, the Future City Competition is a project-based learning program where middle school students imagine, research, design, and build cities of the future. And whereas in addition to placing first in the state competition, VECTOR was recognized for best infrastructure by the American Society of Civil Engineers, best use of ceramics by Allied Mineral Products, best use of energy by Commonwealth Associates, best use of recreation by Worthington AM Rotary Club, most environmentally friendly by IBI Group, best land surveying practices by National Council of Examiners for Engineers and Surveyors, and best city essay for the Ohio Region. And whereas the VECTOR team competed in April of 2021 at the National Future City Competition against 42 teams where it won a special award, Mission Possible, positively impacting the community from the National Society of Black Engineers. And whereas the students who attend Dublin City Schools were mentored by their mothers Mindy Carr, an environmental engineer, and Elaine Spielberg, who served as a parent mentor. Now therefore I, Chris Samrose-Groom, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, in behalf of all of Dublin City Council do hereby congratulate Team VECTOR for its creativity and ingenuity in bringing this recognition to themselves, their schools, and our community. So welcome for you. So nice to have you.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. Thank you.
Tell us in a minute or two about how you navigated this process and some of the things you learned.
The Future City Competition allowed us to combine art and engineering, and it also required communication skills to describe the city in an essay. And for our virtual submission, it also incorporated video production, which was very fun. And the combination of multiple areas of interest created an outlet through which all of the team members excelled. So it was very fun to be a part of the team in which everybody was being able to put their best self forward.
Thanks, Emily. Spielberg, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we were able to express our creativity outside of school and recognize the abilities of our team members and friends.
And being a part of the Future City Competition was an excellent opportunity to collaborate with our friends on a project that we would normally not be able to work on together, especially during the pandemic and with the added barrier of being in online school. And we enjoyed seeing our friends on a regular basis.
Yes, in addition, we also learned valuable time management skills, you know, early on. And this really helped us especially much sticking to a project plan in order to get things done by a certain deadline. And we also, we also, our favorite part was building our model because we got to look at our materials creatively and in a new way in order to be able to find materials that would fit as buildings on the moon and such. And so we also used the engineering design process to help us build our models, and that was really fun for us.
Well, it sounds like you guys spent your COVID time well. You did not waste a minute of it, and you learned some really valuable life skills. So we're really hopeful that we can stay in touch with you. We have, you have our, your vision is, and for 100 years, your vision is much longer than ours. We're in the midst of doing a 2035 framework plan, and you're kind of making me feel bad. Like, we're not, we're not looking long enough. But we really hope that we can engage you in that at some point and you can help us think about what 2035, just here on Earth, would be like. Because if you could figure it out on the moon, this Earth stuff's going to be a piece of cake for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for being with us tonight.
Yes, thank you for having us.
And you're welcome to stay for this very entertaining Dublin City Council meeting. But you might, you might have some homework to do. You do have a few days left of school before summer break. So anything else?
No, I think we're all good.
Mayor Mike is allowed, and I just, before the kids head out, I just wanted to say that your wish may be closer than you may realize because I coordinate the Future City Competition for the state of Ohio with a group of team members. I'm actually on the cusp of Dublin and Hilliard. My post office is Dublin. My taxes go to Hilliard, but.
It's okay. We still like you.
Pardon?
That's okay. We still like you.
Thank you. We, but I was about to just share that they did a phenomenal job. I mean, it was under very difficult circumstances. Typically, you know, these young people, they meet after school in person. They have a teacher and a guide right there and to help them work through that. And what they've accomplished this year is quite simply amazing. We started off with 23 schools across Ohio, 27 actually, and only six of them made it to the finals. And then as you read out the awards that not only did RLA win first prize for the state of Ohio, but they also swept a whole number of special awards. So that was all great. And I was saying your wish may be closer than you realize because we're already working on next year's competition. And the theme this time is going to be a zero-waste city. So you can hold them to their word now and say, get them working right now. Check your labor laws, but get them working on a zero-waste city for the 2022 competition. That's already out there, and we're already doing the planning. So thank you all for taking the time to recognize these young people. I think they're quite amazing. When I was their age, all I cared about was soccer and girls. But I think here they are doing fantastic work. So I appreciate the recognition for them and the city of Dublin as well.
Thank you, Mr. We appreciate folks like you working with them. And we do have, you know, we do are working towards looking at zero-waste events here in the city. So maybe the events people might be some of the first to reach out to you and see how we might be able to do a Zero Waste Irish Festival and things of that nature. So lots of work to do, and thanks for your leadership and the project. And kiddos, we are so proud of you and your community is grateful for your hard work in this difficult time. So thanks for being with us and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Grooms.
Thank you.
Bye.
See you. Okay, and we have another proclamation here that we get to celebrate tonight. It's always nice when you get to celebrate things at the beginning of a meeting. So this is going to be a proclamation that is right agenda here for me, right? This is going to be for Courtney Porter. Courtney, are you with us this evening? For COSI STEM Star. Look at you, working hard. Thank you for that. Well, Courtney, I'm going to do the same with you. I'm going to read this proclamation. I don't want to make you take off your mask, and hopefully you're somewhere where that's okay. Don't break any rules here, but I'm going to read this proclamation. And we might have a few questions for you in a moment to share your thoughts. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Courtney Porter, the RN Clinical Leader at Nationwide Children's Hospital Close to Home Urgent Care Center in Dublin, is a 2021 COSI STEM Star and represented the city of Dublin at the Third Annual COSI Science Festival, which took place May 5th through the 8th, 2021. And whereas the COSI STEM Star Award receives, recognizes individuals who champion science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And whereas throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, Courtney has been Dublin urgent care's resource in keeping staff up to date on proper personal protective equipment. You just saw her wearing all of hers. Infection control and equipment cleaning protocols, and in maintaining the facility's safe environment for staff and patients. And whereas one of our valued frontline workers, she was selected for her unwavering dedication to her patients during the pandemic and for demonstrating on a daily basis her passion for science that helps save lives. And whereas a registered nurse and certified pediatric nurse, Courtney is a graduate of the Ohio State University and holds a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's degree in nursing. And whereas Courtney, a graduate of Dublin Kaufman High School, lives in the Dublin community with her husband and two children. And whereas she has worked in the emergency department, pediatric surgery clinic, and the urgent care network during her 17-year nursing career, which began in 2004 at Nationwide Children's Hospital. Now therefore I, Chris Samrose-Groom, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, do hereby congratulate Courtney Porter on behalf of all of Dublin City Council as the city of Dublin's 2021 COSI STEM Star in recognition of her hands-on application of science in improving people's health and well-being. Signed this 24th day of May, 2021. So Courtney, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much.
That was a mouthful. So tell us a little bit about what you did.
Well, I am the RN Clinical Leader for the Nationwide Children's Hospital Dublin Urgent Care. Those of you with kids may have seen me before. I may have even taken care of your kids at some point. So happy to see you, not happy to see you all at the same time, of course. But yeah, we have definitely done our best to make sure that we are keeping up to date with all of the latest news regarding COVID and just doing our best to keep our patients as well as our staff and families safe during all of this.
Well, you know, we cannot say, well, we appreciate all you've done for the COSI STEM Star and for the science festivals. Those are really important and meaningful activities for youth all over our region, truthfully. But we really thank you for your work that you've done in the medical profession and being a nurse and looking out for our community and the youngest and some of the most vulnerable. And really appreciate all that you've done. So thanks for being with us tonight. We'll get you this proclamation. We'll get one delivered to you, and we're really proud of you and really glad that you called up.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. I sort of feel like this COSI STEM Award should probably go to those Future City kids because I think really they're, they're some superstars. I'm so impressed by all of them. They're our future leaders right there. So it's fantastic. But, but thank you very much. We really appreciate the support of the Dublin community here at the urgent care. And so it's been a tough year for healthcare workers, as I'm sure you guys all know. But we really appreciate just having the support of this wonderful community. So thank you all very much.
Well, you've got that in abundance, and thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Looks like you have a lot of work ahead of you.
I do. Thank you so much.
See you. Okay, up next, we are going to talk a little bit about Memorial Day services. And I believe Jeff Noble is with us here this evening. There he is. Hello, Jeff. How are you?
Good. How are you, Mayor?
Thanks for being with us tonight.
Sure.
And I understand maybe you might have some, some information for us regarding how Memorial Day services will be held and all of the wonderful events that you all are putting on and how we can participate and/or be a part of those things and what the Dublin community should expect.
Well, of course, the current health rules prevent a public ceremony, I guess. However, the veterans of Lance Corporal Wesley G. Davis, Post 800 of the American Legion, will celebrate the traditional Memorial Day. We'll have a re-ceremony on the bridge, march to the cemetery, and we'll have a small ceremony in the cemetery with a speaker. Couldn't get a band this year, but we've got buglers and maybe a bagpiper. There, we did prepare a special video that will be posted to dublinveterans.com on Memorial Day interviews with some kids. Your councilman Reiner and I yakking it up. You know, Memorial Day is a very special day, and I just hope we get through this phase and can do it the way it really should be done. We invite people to participate in the afternoon moment of silence at three o'clock. The Abbey Theater is doing, and this is new to me, but the Abbey Theater is doing a, producing a virtual adaption of former President Garfield's Declaration Day speech. And that really sounds kind of interesting. And then this weekend, we will also share details of your Leadership Dublin group that worked on a project to tell deceased veterans stories. So essentially using your database on the cemetery. Eventually, we hope that somebody could walk into the cemetery, find a, using the database, find a veteran's grave and hear the story of what he did and where he did it and how he did it. A technology great. The other thing is on Saturday, we will decorate the cemetery as we usually do and the grounds of remembrance also. So if anybody wants to come out and plant flags, we have a couple of scout groups joining us. So they're starting to loosen up a little bit, and we hope it goes well.
Well, Jeff, we really, really appreciate all that all of the veterans do to honor this day. It certainly is a very special day, and it is, I think it breaks all of our hearts that we don't have the opportunity to celebrate it together. I know that is always one of the days that I treasure. So hopefully, the end is near in terms of our COVID protocols, and we will be able to be together sooner rather than later. I did, I did hear the Leadership Dublin Graduation Project, and that project was really outstanding about using the QR codes and having each individual veteran's story be available. I think that would be something extremely special for our community. We believe that they intend to continue that project and see it to fruition. So I know that you all were a great help to them, and we certainly do appreciate that. And I'm sure you will continue to be. But yeah, we'll, I believe, be pushing out some of these videos and the moments of silence and things on our communication channel so that the community will know about it. And we'll go ahead and talk with them a little bit about circulating the information about flags on Saturday and see what might be able to do relative to that as well. So. Anything else for us, sir?
No, ma'am.
Well, thank you. And I can't wait to see you again.
Thanks.
See ya.
Take care, man.
Okay, have a great evening. Okay. Next up, we have Scott Dring is here with us this evening, and he is going to be giving us an update on Dublin. So Scott, are you here? He is. Well, Scott.
Thanks. Great to see you, Eric. Great to see everyone. Appreciate a couple minutes. I'm going to be really brief. I know you guys had a stacked agenda today and share actually some good news for once, right? I mean, it's been every time I come on, you're like the Grim Reaper of the last 15 months or so. But I think we have some good news to share with you. To start off, I think the important thing is that we've seen that 89% of Americans plan to travel in the next six months. And that's not only the highest number we've seen during the pandemic, but it's the highest number we've ever seen since the national organization has been doing this. So it just means there's a lot of pent-up demand out there to travel. I can tell you our hotels for every sector of industry, not just hotels, but the number one challenge right now is finding employees. We're doing what we can to help. In fact, we're launching an awareness campaign this week promoting the benefits of working in the hospitality industry and ultimately helping fill those jobs. We'll be collaborating with the Dublin Chamber on that effort that will, again, will launch this week. As you know, bed tax is an important revenue source for the city. We're projecting for the second half of 2021, July through December, that Dublin bed tax will increase 80% over the same period last year. So although that increase is positive, that projection is still 38% below where we were the same period in 2019. We don't expect to reach pre-COVID bed tax levels until 2024. The major reason being the corporate business will be the last to rebound, and that is the majority of our business here in the city of Dublin. 79% of our restaurants are posting improved sales in May over April. The lifting of health orders, change in Ohio unemployment, outdoor dining, have all been a huge boost for our restaurants and the local economy. Thanks again to Dana and all of you for supporting the outdoor dining initiative during the pandemic. It was truly a lifeline for a lot of our restaurants. Our retail sector underwent a massive change as consumers were confined to their homes and unable to shop in person. Our knit shops, you know, especially here in downtown Dublin, have fared pretty well, but it'll still be an uphill battle in the future. For the first half of this year, 2021, council was gracious enough to provide Visit Dublin some gap funding of $174,000 for sales and marketing efforts. And I wanted to kind of highlight a few of those results for that investment that you provided us. We generated more than 51 million media impressions showcasing the city of Dublin, national publications such as Forbes, Midwest Living, several television features in Cleveland and Cincinnati, over 200,000 website visits, 20 new business leads, all exceeding our goals. Our weekend business is up, and I think that's the main reason we've been able to kind of weather the storm the last few months as well. Our leisure campaigns promoting Dublin as a weekend destination have generated great results as we market Dublin not only throughout the state of Ohio, but in Pittsburgh, Indy, Detroit, and all markets within a three-hour drive. The Celtic Cocktail Trail is now digital and touchless. We've had more than 1,500 people participate in that since March. We've had over 6,000 participate in the Ferry Door Trail as well. I know these trails seem a little gimmicky at times, but they truly generate dollars for our local businesses. For example, to participate in the Cocktail Trail, which includes 18 Dublin businesses, you need to make a purchase and most often discounts on food as well. We continue to lead the downtown Dublin Strategic Alliance, and thank you for DORA. We had a great start this past weekend. Initial feedback is showing record numbers and business and economic impact to the city. I'll give you a few examples. The North Market experience is busiest Thursday through Saturday since opening. Cameron Mitchell Restaurant saw double-digit percentage increases. Coast Wine House, which obviously is the far south end, saw an increase in business. And Ron Jordan is one of our board members and owner at Headquarters, said DORA was a huge impact. They set records over the weekend and really wanted me to make sure that I thank council on behalf of all the restaurants for DORA and all the outdoor dining initiatives that you did. The last bullet point there, you know, most of our partners, the majority of our partners are hotels, restaurants, events, and retail. I think you agree, no industry was harder hit in the pandemic than ours. And I think it says a lot that 98% of our partners renewed their financial partnership to Visit Dublin in the middle of the pandemic, reinforcing that we're doing what is essential for their providing, for their survival. And we actually had 17 new partners as well this year. And I hope it's just another confirmation that your investment is being well-spent. So where do we go for the rest of 2021? Our leisure market, we're launching a statewide and regional campaign promoting the city during the summer and fall. This will be mostly a digital campaign, which will reach those within a three-hour drive of Dublin. We continue to pitch Dublin as a destination to the sports organizers in hopes of attracting their event to the city. We're also growing current sports business, such as the Buckeye Archery Classic, which will be held this summer. It's actually the fourth time it will be held here in the city, and they've actually announced that they'll be coming back next year as well. Bus tours, we're creating new experiences to track those tours here to Dublin. This market has been bouncing back a lot quicker than we expected. In fact, we've already hosted several buses from Illinois, New Jersey, New Hampshire, and others. These buses typically hold 50 or so visitors, and they dump a lot of money in our hotels, restaurants, and retail. Locally, we'll be bringing back the popular picnic packs program, promoting takeout and outdoor dining experiences. We have a website, incentives that will promote heavily across central Ohio. Corporate business travel is still slow. As we predicted, this segment will be the last to rebound, and we're concerned that the work at home may have a permanent impact. We'll keep looking at that and working with Cardinal and our other corporate partners to track that. The good news is that we're attending several trade shows this fall that will meet with regional and national meeting planners to promote Dublin. These shows were a critical tactic for us to track business, and we're canceled during the pandemic. Kind of to finish up, I can tell you that we continue to execute several DEI initiatives such as diverse representation on our board, using diverse influencers and vendors. And our board president, Dr. David Lee, is leading a DEI committee with a focus on what we can do as an organization, what we can do to lead Dublin's hospitality industry as well. We're working with Homer to have our staff use the city train with Steve Francis. And we actually just met with Homer and Kirby last week to make sure we're complementing each other's efforts more aligned in the future. So again, thank you for your leadership on this important effort. New board members quickly, again, I mentioned Ron Jordan, owner of Headquarter, Rick Harrison-Wolfe, who's the executive director at the North Market, and Sharon Baker-McGee is our new city council representative, replacing Frank Wilson, who did a fantastic job over his six-year term as well. And Betty Clark is your other city council rep. So again, thank you for all you're doing for our industry, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thanks, Scott. Sure do appreciate the update. Any questions from council?
Hey, Scott, is River Boxes, you know, that's one of the nice tourist things that you've done such a good job with the Ferry Doors and the Celtic Cocktail Trail. And another fun thing to do when you get here is the River Boxes. Are you guys working that out with the Arts Council, or how's that all being handled?
Absolutely. You know, we're using their assets all the time, not only River Boxes, but all the art public places. They're doing, you know, they've done a tremendous job during this pandemic of creating some new products as well. And we're going to announce, I won't spoil it now, but in the next week or so, you're going to hear about a new campaign that we're working with them collaboratively locally, celebrating local heroes. So yeah, it's a hand-in-hand collaboration for sure, John.
You know, another cool thing that we were discussing a number of weeks ago was the different bicycle trails, the Ice Cream Bicycle Trail, the Historic Bicycle Trail, the Art Trail, and possibly even the Fishing Trail. So I don't know how far you guys got into the weeds with that, but that sounded like a real. I don't know how far you guys got into the weeds with that, but that sounded like a really fun thing to draw people down here to do different kind of things. So I don't know how that's coming along. You know, we just heard about it maybe a month or so ago. Have you got any reflections on that or what's going on?
We have. I mean, we've had several meetings with the city staff on that. I think we actually have one tomorrow morning. The new Emerald Trail that the city launched a couple of weeks ago, you know, that connects everything, the connectivity is a great message for us. So so yeah, we're on top of that for sure. It's another great, any product we can have to sell. I know Councilwoman Fox gave us a lead several months ago about birding and it being an attraction. So we're working with the bird expert, if the city staff to even help promote that and get people down here to enjoy that as well.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for everything you're doing, Scott.
Okay, anything else? I'll sure do appreciate the updates, Scott. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to citizen comments portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda. Lindsay, have we had anyone who wishes to make comment?
Good evening, Mayor. We have not had any comments at this time.
Okay, our consent agenda, is there a request to remove anything from the this evening's consent agenda? Hearing none. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the four items listed. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Emros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to second reading, public hearing ordinances, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Maintaining the existing ward boundaries of the city of Dublin as required by Article nine point zero four of the revised charter.
Thank you. Homer, do you have a staff report for us this evening?
Yes, members of council, good evening. There are no changes from the first reading. Staff recommends, subject to your question, staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Lindsay, do we have any public comments relative to this legislation?
We do not.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. This is just as a reminder, we will revisit this once the census data is available and we have solid numbers in which to change, make any adjustments as necessary to the boundaries, ward boundaries. So that being said, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Emros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thanks Homer. Okay, ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Adopting the proposed tax budget for fiscal year 2022.
All right, do sit.
Thank you. And Matt Stifler will present for us. Welcome, Matt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Before you tonight is ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one, which contains the two thousand twenty-two tax budget. This budget is required to be adoptive, effective, and provided to the county auditor no later than July twentieth. Having its first hearing tonight with the second hearing scheduled for your next meeting will allow the city to comply with this timeline. Filing this information with the county auditor is a requirement for the city to be eligible to receive our share of local government funds. And in two thousand twenty, the city received $433,000 in local government funds. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance at the second hearing on June fourteenth. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Matt. Lindsay, have we received any public comment relative to this legislation?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. We will look forward to seeing you back on June the fourteenth for second reading. Thank you, Matt. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Amendments to zoning code section one five three point zero two two definitions in section one five three point zero two six suburban office district to add a new land use classification for specialty hospitals to the suburban office district.
All right, do sit.
Tammy Noble is going to have our staff. Ready for us as we speak.
Thank you so much. And you can see my presentation, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So this legislation is introducing a new land use classification for specialty hospitals. The city had talked to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as council members. And with the dynamics of the medical industry, decided that there should be a land use classification that's specific to specialty hospitals. So currently, specialty hospitals are listed under hospitals, which are permitted in suburban office in several of our Broad Street districts. This is a general land use classification that allows for more intensive medical uses. And again, prompts the question of the current proposal for something that's more specific to smaller operations. We've reviewed several of the applications that not only went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but as well as inquiries that went to general staff and dissected what the operational needs of these specific uses are. And thus determined a definition and conditions for this particular use. So just a general overview, this was originally introduced to the Planning and Zoning Commission in October. We went to the Planning and Zoning Commission with specific code language in both February and March and reviewed not only the definition of specialty hospitals, but specifically land use standards for the for this use. And we have finalized a recommendation in April twenty twenty-one. The current definition you'll see on your screen is a care facility that's focused on one or more concentrated areas of medical care with overnight care of patients. I won't go through the particulars of the definition, but specifically, we're recommending that specialty hospitals be proposed as a conditional use specifically in this suburban office district with the following recommendations. That the site be located on a minimum of three acres in size. That the facilities be required a density of ninety-five hundred square feet per acre with a maximum of fifty thousand square feet. That the facility be located within a minimum of five hundred square feet, or excuse me, feet from residential uses. That any type of outdoor spaces be located to the side or rear of the facility. Let lighting standards meet the Dublin City Code. And that there be an emergency and security plan permitted by staff. And a parking plan, again, permitted by city staff. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed amendments, and we are requesting respectfully approval by city council on the second hearing of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Great, thank you, Tammy. I want to check in with Lindsay. Have we received any public comment relative to this legislation?
We have not.
See that. Council questions, discussion? Jane?
Yeah, Tammy, I think that in the code, if I'm not correct, I think we removed the fence requirement. It was in your presentation, but I think that was removed. So I wanted to verify, just clarify that. I wanted to mention to council that first and foremost, to really thank staff for all the work that they put into this specialty hospital code definition and the restrictions in the parameters, as well as the fact that legal had quite a bit of input on this. But Planning and Zoning looked at this with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that that the correct kinds of code language would provide the very best kind of specialty hospital use for the residences. And one thing that I would just point out is that there is a five hundred-foot setback from any residential. And I think that's a really important point to notice. These specialty hospitals are going to become more and more common within communities to get healthcare closer to within a community instead of to go far. And I think that this is a prime opportunity for us to to be able to give parameters that are healthy, not only for the hospitals to serve these patients, but also healthy for a community and their placement. Minimum three acres, maximum square footage, maximum per acreage, good buffering from residential, asking for an emergency and a perimeter security plan when it's necessary to address operational needs, which gives flexibility. And and a fifty percent building coverage of lots. So I think that this will give us in the future a really nice opportunity to bring the right kind of hospital care, specialty hospital care into the community. So thank you, planning, and thank you, legal, for all the work you've done on this.
Any other comments from council? Yeah, Kevin?
I just had a quick question, just for clarification, not for necessarily questioning, but the size dimensions and the footprint dimensions, how did the group arrive at that size? Is there is there sort of a standard of what these would look like? I'm just interested in in the size and scope requirement. Thank you.
Now, that's an excellent question. We actually reviewed some of our current operations as well as our some requests that we've we had gotten in. And we just determined that there seems to be this gap. And fifty thousand square feet seems to be the smaller of the operations, and it rises significantly to a hundred thousand square feet. So we use that as a gate point for minimizing the smaller operations.
So if someone wanted to come in with something that was slightly bigger, how would that work?
That's a good question. I mean, these are use-specific standards, so they they're required to be meant to be permitted. I don't know if legal wants to weigh in. I'm not exactly certain that you could do a variance to use specific standards. But they're they're meant to contain a use under those parameters.
And Tammy, I'm quite happy to, you know, get clarification for the next meeting if that's easier, but it was just interesting to me to understand a little bit about the size dimension. And I see Jennifer's on.
Yeah, I think those use-specific standards are meant to be like more hard and fast rules. And so that portion of it, I think we would be restricted. And if they wanted to do something else, they could always come in as a PUD and get something that's tailored to that specific use.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Any other questions for staff? Tammy, I just have one. You had mentioned about fencing, and one of the consistent themes across all of these is normally the fence that they request is significantly higher than our code permits. And if in fact we did remove the fencing requirement, but how will handle typical need for an increased height in the fence?
Yeah, thank you for that question. That was actually a point of significant conversation. And essentially, the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't want to encourage, number one, the requirement that there is a fence, because that's originally where we started. And number two, that it would increase in any type of way, shape, or form from our current code. So at this point, when it went, if any request were to go forward, that would have to be a specific request. And again, we're not, we're simply not trying to encourage fencing as a requirement. It doesn't necessarily accommodate the use. It is in certain instances a requirement, but we're, again, we're not trying to encourage fences as a requirement.
Okay, thank you. Jane, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think the reason that we put in the emergency and perimeter security plan was to address any operational needs. Therefore, if a fence was, if the if Planning and Zoning felt that a fence was required, then that could be something that they would demand in the perimeter security plan. So instead of requiring a fence in every instance, we left that to the Planning and Zoning to to look at a perimeter security plan to see if it's something that they would recommend. So we hope we covered it on that aspect. Is that right, Tammy? Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, yeah, absolutely. I wanted to thank you for that comment. That's perfect.
Okay, other comments? Okay, well, we look forward to a second hearing on June fourteen. Okay, this brings us to introduction. Sorry?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, introduction, public hearing vote resolutions, resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-one.
Acceptance of historic design guidelines, replacing the historic Dublin design guidelines applicable to historic Dublin and outlined historic properties identified in Appendix G.
All right, do sit.
Thank you. Nikki Martin, she is welcome. Nikki, your staff report for us this evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. As mentioned, this is a request for acceptance of a resolution for new historic design guidelines. This project is many years in the making and is the result of stakeholder engagement, public community engagement, as well as several years of board and commission review. The guidelines are comprised of two parts. Part one is a general overview, which sets the stage for recommendations provided in the second part, which are chapters four through seven, and are the substantive guidelines. These guidelines are recommended for acceptance in conjunction with the recently approved architectural review district zoning code amendments and area rezoning that were considered by council in February of twenty twenty-one. So in detail, the overview provides context and character of historic Dublin. This was a primary focus of both the Architecture Review Board as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, ensuring we were accurately capturing the cultural landscape as well as the architectural styles of our community. And it also provides guidance on how to use the guidelines for new board members as well as members of the community. There are four chapters dedicated to guidance on how to implement the requirements of the code. These include specific guidance on rehabilitation of existing structures and modification to existing structures, along with graphics, new construction, and how to sensitively address the surrounding context as well as to prioritize preservation within historic Dublin. And finally, site design and signs. Staff, as well as the Architecture Review Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission, are recommending acceptance to city council this evening. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nikki. Lindsay, I want to check in and see if we have received any public comment relative to this legislation?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion?
Yeah, I would just say Nikki, Jenny, all the ARB members, kudos. What, three, four years in the making, very, very comprehensive and thorough. Very well done, and I'm glad to see we're finally getting this thing put to bed. Thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, Chris, I also want to thank the staff. This was a yeoman's job. And for anybody that's listening in the public, I think a couple of things that I'd like to point out that were added to this that maybe give some confidence to maintaining the preservation of the character of the historic district. The way this guideline work was set out, it started out one with the history so that one understands what you know, the past of Dublin was like, and and you know, the past of Dublin was like and and how the historic district developed. But most importantly, it's it is a very clearly explained objectives of what it means to conserve and maintain and preserve the historic district in its context and character. If you don't read anything else, read the context and character part of it. Because what this does is it adds not only an understanding of how the guidelines are supposed to work, but it reassures those who live and love the historic district that it's the preservation of character. It's the preservation of the ambiance. It's that abstract sense when you walk through the district that we're that we're trying to preserve. Because in those three points, the building and architecture is third. The first is the cultural landscape, which 60% of our district is what I call cultural landscape. It's the topography, it's the riverfront, it's the stone walls, it's the cemetery, it's the Indian Run Ravine. All of that is protected in these guidelines and brought out. And secondly, it's neighborhood character. It's what everybody enjoys when they walk down the street. So if you read that piece, or if anyone who cares about the district is wondering whether or not we protected it, all I can do is give the staff a high five, and ARB and all the people that worked on it, a high five, because you have absolutely guided the future of every Architecture Review Board on what it means to protect the district. So I just think it's wonderful. And the code covers everything else that you were worried about, lot coverage, building footprint, height, and all of that. So this is a complete and a wonderful package. And I just give everyone great kudos for the work that they've done. So thank you, Nikki, and everybody on staff.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? I think this was the next next logical step after redefining the area of the district, you know, to nail down this this next set of of protection and consideration. And certainly will hopefully make the ARB's job easier now that they have a defined district that actually contains historical buildings and not have to continue that fight time and time again. So, okay. That being said, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Groves?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 29-21.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2021 annual guard rail replacement and maintenance program.
All right, good sir.
Thank you. And our staff report is going to be, oh, welcome, Paul.
Hey, good evening, members of council. On May 6, 2021, one bid was received publicly opened and read by engineering staff for the 2021 guard rail replacement and maintenance program. This project involves repairing and replacing several specialized areas of guard rail. Specifically, the replacement of the wood guard rail with painted galvanized steel guard rail on the Bristol Parkway Bridge over the North Fork Indian Run, and the removal of 20 feet of bridge parapet on the southeast end of the Bridge Street Bridge over the Souda River and replacing it with steel-backed timber guard rail. All work is located within the existing road right away. In terms of traffic effects of the project, Bristol Parkway will remain open to traffic for the duration of the construction. On the east end of the Bridge Street Bridge over the Souda River, the dedicated right turn lane may be closed for up to eight consecutive days during the construction. The outside eastbound through lane may also be closed to traffic as needed, but for shorter periods during the performance of the work. Both westbound lanes on the Bridge Street will range open to traffic at all times. The engineer's estimate for this work is $170,000. The budgeted funds in the 2021 CIP for annual guard rail replacement and maintenance are $190,000. Paul Peterson Company Incorporated submitted the lowest and best bid of $186,997. The bid received is greater than the engineer's estimate and likely reflects the result of recent cost increases in guard rail material and costs related to the specialized work. Construction is to commence in late summer and the completion date is November 20 of this year. The typical and customary communication methods will be used to convey construction information to residents and motorists throughout the duration of the project. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the Paul Peterson Company bid. Previous experience with Paul Peterson has been excellent on past guard rail replacement and maintenance programs. And staff is confident they will perform well on this project. Staff recommends council approval of resolution 29-21, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Paul Peterson Company Incorporated in the amount of $186,997 and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Paul Peterson Company Incorporated for this program. Be glad to answer any questions council might have about this resolution.
Great, thanks, Paul. Lindsay, do we have any comments from the public?
Nothing to report.
Council questions, discussion? And Jane?
Yeah, I have a question, Paul. What, could you describe what the bridge parapet replaced? What's the bridge parapet on the east end of the bridge? Is it is it part of the old stone work? Is it, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer.
That's a great question. Anyone need to be an engineer to understand this. If you look at the southeast corner of that bridge, there's a concrete parapet wall, looks like the kind of the standard Jersey barrier wall. At the very end of the bridge, as you make that dedicated right turn lane, going into the roundabout, going east to head south. And it basically runs pretty parallel to the curb. And there's been several contacts of vehicles with that parapet wall. We underestimated during the design of that roundabout kind of its location and the impact it might have. So we're just going to trim off 20 feet of that and replace it with timberback steel guard rail, just to minimize that contact point and move it away from the traveled roadway.
Okay, so my my main concern is aesthetics on that east end, because we probably didn't realize when we were doing that little scenic underpass that we were going to get stuck with something that looked like that.
Right.
So this is a better aesthetic, is what you're saying, is going to give us a much better look on that end of the bridge?
Yeah, it's the timber guard rail is what we've used, you know, elsewhere throughout Dublin. So, yeah, instead of just seeing the plain concrete wall that's essentially three to four feet tall, you'll see the the pain painted or stained timber guard rail. So we think aesthetically it'll look better, aside from being more functional. And and that was part of the consideration during the design process is how could we improve the appearance of this?
Yeah, I think that's really important since it's an entryway. And that and that leads to the second question. When do you decide when to use the steel-backed timber guard rail? Because you're replacing a wood guard rail with a painted galvanized steel one on Bristol Parkway. And I'm sure in that neighborhood, they would prefer the timber again. So can you tell me when you choose to do which and what?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a design consideration based on the location and also current standards. The difficulty with the timber rail is is the depth of the rail and the weight of the rail itself. And just functionally trying to get it installed and to work in some locations is very difficult and and many times just can't be accomplished. One of the difficulties with the timber back guard rail is it it's very thick from front of the rail to the back of the post. So sometimes we can't get the appropriate offset from the travel of the roadway to make it function. Whereas the steel guard rail is somewhat thinner. So we always look at the timber guard rail first. That's always our first option on many of our roadways where we can't get that to work. Then we fall back to the painted or powder-coated steel guard rail.
Okay, and those are your really only two good options, aren't they?
They really are, yes.
All right, just thought I'd ask for the community neighborhood, so I know they would have preferred it.
Great question. So I wish that would have been Public Works Week, which was last week, but, you know, we'll take it this week.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I know that East of Butmann has been kind of something we've had our eye on since that since that roundabout opened, so.
That's true.
Bringing that to fruition. We only had one bidder on this project. And I think I was looking for the previous guard rail replacement maintenance programs. And it seemed as though we had three on most. Any other idea why the other two didn't submit business on this occasion?
We asked that question of ourselves. One, probably the volume of work that's actually out there. There were several large state guard rail projects that bid. In our experience, there's been three different guard rail contractors that have bid on our program. All have done great work, but they have a limited capacity. And probably number two, just the specialized work and then the size of this program probably didn't compete as well with some some of the other larger work that's out there. And probably given their capacity, they felt that, hey, well, you know, more interest in the larger work that's probably more profitable than this smaller project.
Well, thanks, Paul. If there's no other questions, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Groves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, resolution 30-21.
Acceptance of a preliminary plat for towns on the Parkway located within the Bridge Street District.
All right, good sir.
Thank you. We'll go back to Nikki for staff presentation. Welcome back.
Let's see if we can make this work tonight. Okay, good evening. Before you is a request for acceptance of a preliminary plat for towns on the Parkway. The site is located within the Bridge Street District and Zoned Sawmill Center Neighborhood District, located south of Teller Road and northwest of the intersection with John Schultz Parkway and Village Parkway. The proposal is for subdivision of approximately 11 acres to establish four new lots for development and the dedication of three public rights of way, as well as to establish necessary easements. Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of the preliminary plat to city council and staff is recommending acceptance tonight.
Okay, great, thank you, Nikki. Lindsay, have we received any public comment relative to this legislation?
I have nothing, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, council questions, discussion? Questions, discussion? I have just a couple items in reading through the minutes from the planning commission. You know, there was some talk about these dead-end private streets essentially in there. And I just wanted to verify that those would, in fact, be private streets, not public streets. So if they were to come out onto the road network, that would be another interaction between a private street and a public street. Is that correct, Nikki?
That is correct.
And there was also a lot of discussion on, I hope I see the applicant is here this evening. I I would just like to encourage the applicant to listen to the planning commission on what they were asking for in terms of, I saw that the approval wasn't given for the roof height continuance and things like that. And hope that they listen to that and really make a good run if they want to be successful at really outstanding buildings and outstanding look. And I think I think the planning commission gave really sound advice to the applicant, so. That I don't have anything further. And if there's nothing further from council on the preliminary plat, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Groves?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 21-31.
Acceptance of a final plat for Bridge Park East, Section 4, Block G.
All right, good sir.
Great, good evening, mayor and members of council. This is a request for acceptance of a final plat. This final plat is for Bridge Park East, Lot 9, located within the Bridge Park Development and specifically to facilitate development of Block G. The site is located north of Bridge Park Avenue and west of Dale Drive. This plat is the combination of three parcels to establish an approximately 2.3-acre site for development as well as to establish public access easements for publicly accessible open spaces. With that, Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval and staff is recommending acceptance of the resolution this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Nikki. Lindsay, have we received public comment on this legislation?
No, we have not.
Council questions, discussion? Yeah, Jane?
Yeah, the only thing that I would say is I think that you can feel pretty good about the planning and zoning's review of this particular plat and the work that they have done with trying to get the building footprint and its siding in a way that is conducive to the public realm. I, there's always more improvements we can always ask for, but I I feel, you know, like like we've really done some good work on this plat. So I just wanted to share that with council.
Okay. Other comments? Hearing now, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Groves?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, our next two resolutions I will abstain from and Vice Mayor DeRosa will. All right, thank you, mayor. So next is resolution 3221.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Chamber of Commerce renovation and addition project.
All right, good sir.
Wonderful, thank you. I believe Megan has our staff report this evening.
Good evening, members of council. Pursuant to the city's lease with the Dublin Chamber of Commerce for the building located at 129 South High Street, Dublin and the Chamber agreed to make certain improvements to the building and site to share the costs of such improvements. Staff and the Chamber decided to implement the improvements in two different phases, with the first phase being the improvements to the building itself and the second phase a gateway pavilion. The first phase improvements to the building were designed in collaboration with the Chamber and includes alterations and updates to the Chamber suite, building or public meeting room, community meeting room with kitchen, compliant public restrooms, and renovated and updated building entrance and interior hallway areas. The architect's estimate for this project at the time of bid is $450,500. We did receive four bids with Miles McClellan Construction Company submitting the lowest and best of $471,100, as outlined in the staff report. The bids were competitive and prices are reflective of cost escalations that are impacting the vertical construction industry. The costs of the improvements to the building contemplated by the lease exceeds the budgeted amounts. And both Dublin staff and the Chamber will share in the cost overruns attributable to each party pursuant to the lease. The city and Chamber's contributions were determined and are outlined in the staff report. It's noteworthy that there were a couple of maintenance items, including relocation of the HVAC unit and painting of the exterior. Those were added to the bid package at the request of Dublin Facilities Maintenance Staff in order to realize efficiencies. And therefore, those costs would be considered outside the scope of the improvements that were outlined in the lease. And those improvement or those maintenance items will be funded as part of Facility Management's renovations budget. With regard to what is referred to in the lease as the gateway pavilion, the Architectural Review Board provided informal feedback on that improvement. And although the members were supportive of the concept of a public gathering and seating space, they expressed significant concerns and recommended other alternatives be investigated. So based on the ARB's feedback and the cost of the first phase improvements to the building exceeding budget, the Chamber and staff agree construction of the pavilion is now unfeasible to build as designed. And accordingly, staff is presenting resolution 33-21, authorizing a lease amendment removing the pavilion from the list of improvements. That's next on your agenda. Should council approve that resolution, the city will no longer be responsible for the pavilion. And the funding for construction of the pavilion, which was estimated to cost $65,000, would be used to offset Dublin's portion of the cost overruns for the Phase 1 improvements to the building. The Chamber has committed to pay for its share of. The Chamber has committed to pay for its share of the improvements to the building as specified to the lease. Um, and construction of this project is anticipated to commence in June and the contractor will have a hundred and twenty days to complete the work. We did secure a right of entry from the adjacent property owner to the north who would provide the contractor access to the work and the property owner did grant that right of entry at no cost. Staff recommends council approval of Resolution thirty-two dash twenty-one, accepting Miles McClellan's bid as the lowest and best. The improvements in the project will provide for a vibrant, flexible collaborative environment to accommodate the Chamber's operations and better serve members and the Dublin business community. A copy of the layout of the building as well as some interior inspiration pictures were included in your packet. And joining us this evening from the Chamber of Commerce are Jenny Amros, the Chief Operating Officer, and Sean Henderson, the Treasurer. They have been great partners in this project and I'd like to thank them for their work and collaboration. And we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Megan. Um, I thought I would check in with Lindsay to see if we've had any public comment on this tonight.
We have not, Vice Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And with that, as Megan said, we're fortunate to have a couple of members of the Chamber with us this evening. So Jenny Amros, if you're there, would you like to make a comment or two?
I would. Thank you. Um, I just really want to thank both city staff and all the council members for their support of this, um, project and seeing the vision that we have to care, to move forward in our business community. It will truly be a wonderful asset.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Jenny. Um, members of council, questions or comments for staff?
So I have a question. It's really more about the math. I mean, I think this is a fantastic, uh, renovation and addition. Um, I'm just having trouble with the math. The original four fifty, that included the sixty-five thousand for the part that is not going to be done now, correct, the pavilion?
Correct. It included the pavilion and also the, um, donations.
Okay. And so the, the cost for, the original cost without the pavilion would have been around three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Is that right?
Correct.
The, so if we take the, the city's, the city's original estimate for their portion was two seventy. So if you take two seventy and you add sixty-five thousand to it, we're basically agreeing to kick in the dollars for the pavilion now to cover the overrun, cost over. Um, I get to thirty-five. So I'm, I'm having a hard time getting from three, going from three thirty-five to three ninety-four and I'm wondering what that difference is.
So I guess to start, you know, the estimates that were provided in the lease are now over a year old and they were pre-COVID. So the vertical construction industry has definitely seen increase in costs. So a review of all of the bids, we, we couldn't really identify one specific item that accounted for the increases. It really was spread out across the bids. So I don't know if that helps.
Well, I guess, yeah, I, I definitely get it. I think I've heard lumber costs are three times what they were. So enough to say that is three hundred percent. It's significant. I get the increase. I guess I thought, I, I was confused because I've seen this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, but it wasn't really four fifty apples that apples. It was three eighty-five was the original estimate for the work that we're now planning to head with. And now it's four seventy-one, so that's a very significant increase. But what the, the, the memo says is we're kicking in three ninety-four and I'm just having a hard time getting to the three ninety-four. Because if I take the, um, if I take the, uh, two seventy, which is what the, the city originally budgeted for their portion without the pavilion and then I add the pavilion in, I get to three thirty-five. It's, you know, it's probably not worth quibbling about. I'm just having a hard time figuring out where this money, why it wasn't accounted for.
So the original, the total project cost as estimated in the lease originally was four hundred and fifty thousand and that included the improvements to the building as well as the pavilion, as well as the furnishing. So that was the total project cost for both the city's contribution and the Chamber's contribution. I hope that helps.
It's, it's okay. Again, it's.
Costs have definitely gone up and that's why.
Good enough. Thank you.
I thought, can I, can I, I thought that the Chamber was paying, I thought that the original estimate of four fifty, the city's cost was three ninety-five, the Chamber's cost. Um, no, let's see. I thought the Chamber was paying for furnishings and the balance of the, of the, um, originally, well, this one is three ninety-five, the city cost seventy-six thousand is the Chamber's cost and an additional seventy-five thousand from the Chamber for the furnishing. So they're chipping in somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct? That's what I thought it was.
That is correct.
And they're not going to get the pavilion.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so for me, uh, the one thing that I would say is I'm very disappointed that the pavilion's not going to get built. I think this is the gateway to the southern part of the district. I think if we intend to, especially with Dora, if we intend to move, retail encouragement into South High Street, if we really intend to, um, recruit for some, um, interesting stuff that, that needs to bring traffic down there, that we need this, we need this pavilion. So I would, um, I would encourage council as if you're taking it out of the lease this time, now you will revisit this when it comes to, um, our capital expenses in the next budget because I, I believe that this is a really important thing. The, the Architecture Review Board, as well as the Historic District Task Force, did recommend something like this at the south end of the district. The ARB was encouraged about seeing some sort of a billion. They, they weren't particularly excited about the design, felt that it was a little bit too overwhelming for the front. That doesn't mean that there can't be a really good design, a better design, one that they would find to be more attractive. So with Dora and with the fact that this is a beautiful package and I do believe that the business community and many people will walk down and use it, I'm requesting that we ask staff to, um, think about including this in the, in the fall budget um, so that we can bring this forward. But I know the Chamber really needs to get this going. I don't want to stop them. I want to get this happening for them. But I definitely think we need this gateway pavilion piece. So that's my pitch and I'm.
Yeah, I'll second that. I, I agree. I thought it was, I thought it was beautiful myself. Maybe now isn't necessarily the best time to be building anything. So if we can drag our feet, come up with a regroup and come up with a better design that ARB can get behind, I'm all for it.
Other comments, thoughts on this? Well, I will echo that it's a lovely design and, um, as we look at that redesign, even more of the space looks like it's going to public use in that and in the building. So I, I think that's phenomenal. Having listened to Scott's conversation earlier about the future of work, these types of spaces are going to be in significant demand. So, um, really is incredibly unfortunate that we've seen this price increase have to put us in a position to, to make some choices here, but, um, we're seeing that all around. We saw that in the guardrail this evening. We're seeing that kind of everywhere. So it's wonderful to get an opportunity to begin this work. And, um, then as we re-look at our CIP moving forward, have an opportunity to, I, I agree, I think there's some, um, opportunities to do that pavilion at a future point. So, um, any other comments or thoughts? If not, Jenny, could you please call a roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution thirty-three dash twenty-one.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment of the lease agreement between the city of Dublin and the Dublin Chamber of Commerce.
I'll reduce it.
Thank you very much, Christina. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. As was mentioned in the introduction to Resolution thirty-two dash twenty-one, pursuant to the city's lease with the Dublin Chamber of Commerce for the building located at one twenty-nine South High Street, Dublin and the Chamber agreed to make certain improvements to the building and site and to share the costs of such improvements. The Architecture Review Board reviewed and provided informal feedback on the improvement that was referred to in the lease as the downtown gateway pavilion at their August twenty-sixth meeting. And although the members were supportive of the creation of a public gathering and seating space that was open to the public, they did express concerns that the proposed structure and its design overwhelmed the existing building and dominated the street frontage. They also expressed concerns about the increase in lot coverage with the proposal and recommended the applicant, um, investigate other alternatives to meet the requirements. So based on the ARB's feedback and the costs of the other improvements to the building coming in higher than expected, the Chamber and staff agree construction of the pavilion is now unfeasible to build as it's currently designed. And accordingly, staff in the Chamber have agreed to amend the lease, removing the pavilion from the list of improvements in both Exhibits B and C to the lease. Should council approve this resolution, then the city will no longer be responsible for the pavilion and we will use that funding that was identified for construction toward offsetting Dublin's portion of the cost overruns for Phase One improvements to the building. The balance of the lease remains unchanged. Once again, I would like to thank the Chamber for their work and collaboration on the improvements and on this lease amendment. And staff recommends council approval of Resolution thirty-three dash twenty-one, authorizing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment of the lease agreement between the city and the Dublin Chamber of Commerce. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much, Megan. Lindsay, I'll check in to see if we've had any public comment?
We have not.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I, I would like to again thank our partners at the Chamber. I think this is a wonderful project and very excited to be able to partner with you on this and bring some new amenities to our business community and the residents. And, uh, as we said earlier, hopefully we'll be able to circle back around and, and complete the project at some point in the future. Um, thank you very much for your partnership. With that, Jenny, could you just call a roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, um, this brings us to Resolution thirty-four dash twenty-one.
Temporarily permitting outdoor dining and eating areas beyond previously approved locations, temporarily permitting portable non-residential structures and temporarily permitting certain signs.
I'll reduce it.
Thank you, Christina. And, uh, General, just wanted to be, uh, present our staff report this evening. Welcome, Dana.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, members of council. As you know, as part of my authority, when I declared a state of emergency relative to COVID nineteen, I enacted several executive orders that permitted the following. First, outdoor dining and eating areas beyond previously approved locations. Second, portable non-residential structures. Third, window signs greater than ten percent square footage of all windows and temporary signs in front of businesses. These temporary permits automatically expire when I end the state of emergency and I will very likely lift that state of emergency in the near future, assuming the governor will be lifting his relative to the pandemic. So once lifted, the temporary permits I authorized will no longer be in effect. So I do believe the lifting of public health restrictions guidelines is occurring sooner than expected, which by the way is a great thing. I think we would all agree. However, I do, I believe that our restaurants and others still need some time to recover and or make up for losses experienced during the pandemic. Also, transitioning door to normal will take time as well, as I'm sure you can imagine. So we really have three outdoor dining scenarios that remain where we have issued temporary permits. The first one is Bridge Park, representing several restaurants, namely The Avenue, Frank and Carl's, Rebel, Z Cucina, Hen Cor, Urban Myers Pinehouse, Cap City and Fidell. As you know, these have been predominantly in the street on long shore or expanded sidewalk seating. Secondly, there's Tucci's in Historic Dublin, who's normally issued a permit for outdoor dining, uh, generally this time of year through October first anyway. And they also have some seating, uh, along the south side of the restaurant. Napa and Katzinger's, in Napa's case, I just want to take a moment to thank Tim Rollins, the owner, for his cooperation in trying to mitigate noise to the residents and only using a portion of the outdoor space he might have otherwise been able to use. As much or more so, I want to also thank the immediate residential neighbors to Napa who have been most patient and understanding during this period. These residents and neighbors have expressed that they did experience unwanted noise in the patio during this period, but they were certainly willing and understanding of the situation at hand and allowed that to continue. At the same time, they have, they have stated that they are willing to work with Napa to see if their concerns can be mitigated should more time be permitted for Napa to have a temporary, uh, patio use. Coast Wines on South High Street had some temporary permit as well, although they've, they are not using it so much now. They had some temporary seating in their lawn, but they, they are not using it anymore. They're really relying on their existing patio. And then a fifth item is St. Bridges, who had some outdoor facilities, classrooms, uh, that gave them some, um, temporary expansion space. So Resolution thirty-four twenty-one is being brought before council this evening for your consideration in advance again of the lifting of the state of emergency, should that happen. The key question is, should the city continue to grant temporary permits for these situations for what staff proposes to be through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one or some other time? That would be council's pleasure. Obviously, we're proposing, uh, this to allow some additional runway for recovery and transition. And we will only do this if noise concerns can be reasonably addressed. So hopefully, you know, we can come to, uh, to an agreement and address any issues that may exist between neighbors and, and any adjacent restaurants, if that be the case. So I, I want to thank you, uh, for your consideration of this question. And by the way, I'll ask Jennifer Rader, our law director, if she has any cleanup she wants to do based on my comments, in case there's something I missed. So Jennifer, do you have anything you want to add?
Perfect. Nothing to add.
Okay. I, I won't get that very often, so I'll thank her for that one, so.
I had a little hint of drafting it.
Oh, she did. She helped me out, coached me through. So we'll, we'll try to, uh, answer any questions between Jennifer and I if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lindsay, have we received any public comment relative to this legislation?
We have not.
She did. Council questions, discussion? Andy?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Andy.
Okay. I, I was just going to say, I think I've said before, I'd really like to see parts of, uh, Bridge Park shut down permanently and, uh, you know, raise the, the road bed up, put some pavers in and, um, planters and that kind of thing. Make it a little bit more walkable. I know it's a challenge in, in parts where the park, there's a parking garage and you got to get the garbage trucks in and out, but I'd really like to explore that option with the city and Crawford-Hoying if there's, um, interest in that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Andy. I think it's really important to have a pedestrian, walkable city down there. I think, uh, those improvements will help everybody out. I think just make the whole ambiance a lot more enjoyable for everyone. So I think this is a great thing, Dana, and I think it's something we should do. And not, I don't know if it needs a lot of discussion or not. I think it's well put together and it's something important not only for the citizens but for the businesses down there.
Andy?
You know, I, it brings up a really interesting conversation, too. I don't disagree. I, I, I think that the pandemic has shown us how much fun streetside dining can be and these pedestrian ways that were created out of, out of a need have turned out to be a real fun amenity. I think, though, we have to ask ourselves a question as, is our code one that we should be looking at ways to create spaces that allow us to have more creative outdoor dining? Like we're talking about the Darby Lot now, we're going to be using it around the Irish Festival for all sorts of things. So, you know, I think it's worth a little, um, you know, maybe conversations and study to sit down. you know, maybe conversations and study to sit down and take a look at how we can be a little bit more creative with our streetscape and allowing some of these, you know, interesting dining options or place-making amenities or whatever, and, and not so restrictive. And then I also wonder whether or not, going into the winter, we talked about like a winter festival, whether or not taking the opportunity down in Bridge Park where we've closed off the street in the summer, maybe that's an opportunity to try it out with a winter festival down there, just to kind of see what it would be like to have this pedestrian byway, you know, in the middle of Bridge Park. But, but I, I'd like to pursue the conversation because I think there's a lot of opportunity here.
Yeah, Kathy.
Thanks very much. Yeah, Jane, I, I think there's lots of interesting opportunity, and I think folks have really enjoyed it. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and Dana had referred to the situation at Napa. I think everybody has enjoyed having outdoor dining. There, there are residents, and I, I can tell you that they have reached out to me about noise control and issues, ongoing issues. For those folks that are listening that aren't familiar with Napa, there's houses directly behind Napa. Napa and/or actually that development was built after those homes were built. So many of these residents did not opt into this situation. It sort of opted itself onto them, and they continue to have issues. And I so appreciate Dana, you're reaching out to the owners. I think the residents are also appreciative of having outdoor dining and want to find a resolution to that. But I, I, it's very important that I share with council, and I told the residents that I would, that if the noise continues, that, that, that is not an, an option. They have been very patient and, and very understanding, but have, have consistently, without exception, those directly behind shared that, that the noise is still loud. So I thank you, Dana, for reaching out and, and finding a, a resolution. But I just want to, you know, share with council and get some feedback that if that is not, in that one particular situation remedied, that there is a way in this particular resolution to, to say that that's not an acceptable situation. So again, let's hope a really good positive resolution happens, but if it doesn't, this, this, the way this is written, I believe, if I understand, and I'm looking at Jennifer, and she's nodding her head, allows the city manager the, the ability to, to say we haven't reached satisfaction here.
Yes, that's correct.
If I may, Mayor, Vice Mayor DeRosa, thanks. I want to thank you for reaching out as well to those residents. We knew going into this situation that that was particularly sensitive, and the residents, you know, cooperated in a great way, which, you know, I, I will reiterate that yet again, and how much we appreciated that. And, and my conversation with Tim Rollins is very interested in trying to find a way that they, he can continue during this runway, if you allow it. I'm calling it. It's not a permanent arrangement. None of these will be. It's just to, you know, as we've said, try to extend a little bit and then give time for, as you all suggested, for some more discussion about what might could be some permanent solutions and/or invite people to come forward and try to resolve those or create opportunities and maybe go through a process to consider more permanent situations. So it's a good bridging solution potentially, but I commit that I will work with the residents and Mr. Rollins as well to try to find a meanable solution there.
Thank you, Dana.
Oh, Kathy, or can I just ask the question of Dana or you, Kathy? Is this a noise problem from music or just from conversation, outdoor dining conversation?
Dana, you're muted.
Hit the wrong, I thought it was unmuted. And Vice Mayor DeRosa can speak to as much as I can, but our, our understanding, if you let me, Vice Mayor DeRosa, is that it's really been more about voices as much as anything. I don't even think he's had live music out there. It's been voices later in the evening, which tend to carry more, and people kind of get happier when the evening moves on, too, and a little bit louder. But, which can be a good thing, but it's not such a good thing if you have to listen to it. So we're, we're very tuned into that situation and try to work through some mitigative type actions to see if we can figure a way to soften that. And again, for a temporary timeframe.
That is my understanding as well. Jane?
Thank you. It helps to understand where the noise is coming from. Okay.
You know, I, I wouldn't, I really agree with Andy and Jane about, you know, having opportunity for outdoor dining, particularly Bridge Park. I think that really Planning Commission ought to look at what, what was originally contemplated. There was significantly wider sidewalks than are what, what is there at present so that we wouldn't have to close really expensive roads in order to provide that. So our code heights of uses are code. On the property there also. I appreciate those comments.
You're cutting out, Chris. Maybe you could repeat the last.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just saying, I, I think it's important to go back to what was originally contemplated there, and that, that is significantly wider sidewalks that would allow for, you know, alfresco kind of dining and also yet provide an urban, walkable district as well so that these, these entities can dominate both of those on, on the development, the property that they're doing. So we don't need to require, we won't, wouldn't be required to close really expensive roads to, to have that ability at this point in time. So I, I think probably a look at code is, is important on that as well. Any other comments, discussion from council? Nope, hearing none. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rose Room?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, General. Okay, other business. We have our Beautify Your Neighborhood grants, and Jenny Roush will have our staff report. Can, can you hear me? Am I still breaking out?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Maybe Jenny might be having some technical difficulties. Maybe we will go ahead and skip to the Dora extension of hours and we'll come back to Jenny. So we have an extension of hours request for the Dora, and Allison, there she is, and she will be giving her staff report.
I think Jenny was just waiting because this is a good transition from the last topic that we just had. So good evening, members of council. As many of you know, that we are planning on doing Dublin Irish Days instead of a typical, normal Irish festival. And a big part of that is bringing a lot of the things we did over at the Irish Festival into downtown Dublin. We have confirmed now, we're going to have thirty of our vendors set up in the Derby Lot throughout the weekend. We're working with Visit Dublin, Scott and his staff to do, have some bands in some of the bars and restaurants. We're having hotel packages. We're going to have pop-up entertainment throughout the weekend. So we just want to make sure that the entire downtown area is full of music and fun. And we've, you know, we've talked to our other partners down there, and we think in the long run, this might really be kind of the, almost like a playbook for any other big events that would want to take over and do stuff throughout the area. So because this is the first time we're doing something like this, connecting both sides of the river, we're asking to extend the Dora hours. This is the first request for the extension of the Dora hours. At this point, I think it might be the only one during our Dora pilot program. I've not received any other requests from now through August, but something could pop up, although we asked for sixty days' notice. So, and we, it's something that council can do just as a vote on their own. We don't need to go back to the state to change hours specifically. So it's just a simple vote of council. So the days that we're looking at, the Dub Crawl, we're calling, we're calling the whole weekend the Dub Crawl instead of just the Thursday night. So Thursday night would be the same hours that Dorman normally is from five to ten. On Friday, we're asking to extend it just a couple hours to midnight. On Saturday, we want to take advantage of the whole day. We think this might be a test. So we put in nine AM because that's when the farmer's market starts, and so we thought that might be a white, nice way to test that out. And then on Sunday, we are proposing from noon to eight PM. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Allison. Lindsay, I want to check in with you to see if we've received any public comment relative to this legislation.
We have not.
Great. Thank you. Council questions and discussion?
The only question I would have, Chris, is, and, and I'm sure I'm going to get a, a zero response on this, is were there any, Allison, did you have any documented complaints through the police department through anything about the Dora this past week?
I'll actually ask Lindsay to come back up. She did a little research this morning. I heard all the positive things. I know she was checking in with police and others to see if they received any comments on their end. I'm surprising Lindsay. She's. Oh, there's Chief.
Thanks, Allison. Just had to turn on my camera and unmute, and I'm, now I'm ready to go. Yes, we did follow up with all of the key stakeholders this morning. You heard from Scott Dring earlier today, who touched base with all of the businesses who had basically glowing reviews. We also checked with police, who had no concerns or incidents that they reported from the first weekend. Obviously, they were monitoring that closely. And we do have a QR code and a link up to receive feedback from people that we were promoting throughout the weekend, and we received three comments through that. Two were positive, very positive, and then the third was just from a resident at Bridge Park who didn't, it was before the Dora even happened, and just said that they're, they were concerned about noise. But other than that, we received positive comments after this weekend.
Thanks, Lyndy. I think that's important as we decide whether or not we're going to extend hours. We should know how it worked out the first week. Okay.
Absolutely. Yep, and we are monitoring closely. So thanks for asking.
Hey, other comments? Yeah, Kathy? Oh, sorry.
I, I have a question first and then a comment. Allison, when do the events end on Saturday night, the city activity events? We're, we're extending this to midnight. Does that mean you can buy alcohol up until midnight? Or the event, I'm just trying to understand the parameters.
Yeah, the way we set, set the rules with the businesses, so on a normal night, if it ends at ten, we tell them that they should serve their last drink by nine-thirty. Mainly because we said that you don't have a lot of time then to do anything with it. If you, if you serve it at ten, you can't even take it outside. So we are planning on having, some of the restaurants and bars will have bans that late. Our shopping area will not last that late, but one of the things we're looking at, a, a small stage over on the Bridge Park side, we actually want to do outdoor movies after the sun goes down. So we're looking at maybe doing some different movies, Irish movies outside at night, and it would be more for an adult crowd. So we're looking at things like The Quiet Man and, and, you know, things that adults would enjoy, not necessarily kid movies. So that should go later in the evening.
So under the way this would be written, we would say the, the last service is at eleven-thirty? Is that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And then my only other comment is, on, on the Sunday, I'm just curious what time those events begin. I mean, does one o'clock, I'm just thinking about, we have a church in the, in the proximity, I know, and thank you, staff has reached out to the, to the pastor to make sure they understand, if one o'clock in the afternoon might not be a more reasonable time to start that on a Sunday, just given the proximity to service areas, et cetera. Thanks.
We are starting the vendors at noon because one of the things we wanted to do is capture some of those people who went to the services that, over at the church. We wanted them to be able to come from whatever the service, after they were done, to come over and do some shopping. And we also, right now, we have some music planned in the Bri High Square. I think actually that specific group is a harpist at noon on Sunday. So we do have some things planned for noon, but certainly if we wanted to start a little later, it probably wouldn't have a huge impact.
I think that would make sense personally. I don't know what my colleagues feel about that.
I would be supportive of a noon start on Sunday. Noon seems a little bit early to be walking around with a drink in your hand on a, on a Sunday almost morning. So I, I would be supportive of a, of a one o'clock start on Sunday.
I'm good with that as well. One, one other, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but we're going to reevaluate the, the Dora concept at least in the fall, if not in the kind of halftime. I, I, I'm, I'm starting to think about the criteria we would use to evaluate this thing and whether it's a success, a failure, you know, what, what are the inputs or metrics? To me, police reports are important, but I'm just thinking out loud here, using twenty-twenty probably isn't a fair baseline because nobody was doing anything in twenty-twenty. So, you know, going back as far as possible, I'm just throwing that out there. It's just been kind of top of my head. You know, wise, drunk and disorderly, whatever, you know, we have to establish what is an acceptable increase? If there is an increase over twenty-eighteen or twenty-nineteen, is it one event? You know, one, one outlier, or is it a certain percentage? Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, we do plan on having a preliminary report. I, I believe, I think we're going to target the last meeting in June for a halfway report, even though it won't quite be halfway. But since there's not an early July, and then we'll be back in August, and police are already gathering those baseline information. Even if we go back, we were saying we still only, you know, if we go back two years, then we have half the number of bars and restaurants that we had probably, you know. So unfortunately, the way things work out, it's going to be hard to compare to any year because there's not going to be a true, normal year with the same number of retailers. So it'll be interesting to see what the numbers come out as.
Allison, can I also suggest that, you know, one of the, one of the criteria for your review would be whether or not there's a real big increase in litter throughout the district? I think that's also an important factor. I mean, we may not get complaints, but we might get trash on the streets or people dumping things where they shouldn't or whatever, and, and, and that's sort of a negative. It's media, media, you can mediate that, obviously, but I'd like to know whether, you know, what are some of the, we know the positive effects. Let's, let's see if we have any real negative effects. Hopefully, we won't. But I, I, along with the others, believe that the one o'clock on Sunday is better because I think church is eleven, I think they have an eleven o'clock service, although they don't list it on their site right. And even though, you can still capture it for shopping, but I, but I do think probably one o'clock's better for allowing alcohol.
Okay.
Right.
You know, I did stop down there Thursday evening. It was relatively early. Well, not so much maybe for a Thursday. It was eight, eight-thirty. And, you know, I didn't see anyone walking around with a Dora cup. You know, granted, I was, I was only there for a half hour, forty minutes, but I would not, and it was a beautiful evening. I would say that I did not see a significant increase in people outside on Thursday. Now, Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday may have been a different story, but on Thursday, there was not a whole lot of activity.
I would say Friday, Friday was a little bit more. We went to dinner down there on Friday evening. And I, I saw several people walking around with Dora cups, but it wasn't like it was some big free-for-all. And I don't think it was necessarily any more than on, on other weekends that I've been down there. And everybody was smiling and happy, and it was really nice, actually.
Beautiful weekend, for sure.
It was, yeah.
Okay, uh, then Christina, was that you making a motion?
Yes, yes, it was.
And is there a second?
Second.
Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rose Room?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Okay, Allison, while we have you, we'll stick with you for the alcohol sales in, in the vein of talking about alcohol. We'll talk about alcohol sales at the twenty-twenty-one Irish Fest.
Well, this is the one that I normally come to you every year with just to ask for permission to serve alcohol in Kaufman Park. Obviously, we expect a far different number than we normally would have, but we will be selling alcohol in two different places during that weekend. We'll be doing it both at the theater show. at the theater show that we're presenting, which the show itself actually takes place in a pub. So we'll have a small bar there where people can have a drink and get one before the show. We don't expect a ton of sales there, because there's not an intermission. So we know that'll be a limited service there. But then for our concerts down on the south side, we will, we're working with our beverage sponsors. And we actually met with Lieutenant Tabernacle today to talk about the security needs down there. So it will not, in any way, look like, you know, a full Irish festival down there, but we're hoping to have around seven thousand people each night. And so we will have police and security on site for that as well.
Great, thank you. Lindsay, have we received any public comment relative to this topic?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? Uh, hearing none, I, I'm sorry, was there one?
No, no, go ahead. I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, John makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Vice Mayor DeRosa? Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Room?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have Homer is already here, so we'll, Jenny, we'll get back to you, Jenny. Hang tight. I haven't forgotten about you. But we'll go ahead with the ethics and D E I training for members of city council boards and commissions in our staff report with Homer.
Okay, again, a good evening, members of council. Currently, all permanent city employees are required to take three mandatory training classes in twenty twenty one. And these consist of the following: a one-hour block of ethics training, Ohio Ethics Training, delivered online, fifty minutes of understanding diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is also delivered online. And that training is broken into nine smaller micro-training modules. That's part of that fifty-minute menu. And then finally, two hours of managing implicit bias and racism, which is delivered by Mr. Steve Francis of Franchise D N I Solutions. During the May fourth Administrative Committee meeting, this training was discussed, and the committee approved the approval to advance to council, a requirement for all members of council, boards, and commissions to undergo the same training with one modification. The two-hour live managing implicit bias and racism session would be scaled back to one hour. There is no cost for the two online sessions, as they exist in our current on training, online training platform, which is Cornerstone. There is a cost, however, for the live sessions, which is twelve hundred fifty dollars per session. And we project three to four sessions being required for all to complete the training. With the Administrative Committee's approval to advance to council, staff recommends this training be required for all council boards and commission members with the two online training sessions being required to be completed within sixty days of assignment in Cornerstone. And staff would coordinate the live sessions for each member to be, to register with the completion required by the end of twenty twenty one. Any new members would be required to complete the online training within sixty days of being appointed. Finally, it is recommended that this, this training be a biannual training requirement, subject to your questions. Again, we recommend approval, and I'm not sure Kathy, you know, has some additional comments, or not, as the chair of the, of the admin committee.
Great, thanks, Homer. I'll check in with Lindsay real quick to see if we've had any public comments.
We have not.
And open up for council questions and discussion, Kathy.
So thank you very much, Homer. And as Homer mentioned, the Administrative Committee discussed a variety of things. I think we were all universally in agreement, this is a very good thing to do. The challenge, of course, is, you know, how to make that fit in a very active group's time commitment. You know, our, our boards and commissions commit a lot of time. So I thank the staff for working with Stephen Francis and, and putting together a program that, one, covers what I think is a great program and aligns that with times and needs of the group. So thank you very much for staff's work on that.
Great, other comments, questions, council?
Homer, those of us who are on boards at the state of Ohio do take some of these courses, Ethics and the other one you mentioned. But I don't know if, ours are, ours are going to be a variant of what the state already makes you take, or should take.
Actually, the one-hour Ethics Training is the state training. We just use their platform and pull it into Cornerstone and require it. So if you've got credit for it already, I'm sure we could, you know, look at, you know, getting it, just as long as we get the information.
All right, thank you.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that personally, as long as we can just document it.
Okay.
Other questions, comments from council? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the recommendations of the admin committee?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christina. Jenny, would you call a roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Room?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Homer. All right, let's go back to Jenny around here, where we, she's resolved her technical difficulties. And our staff report on the beautify your neighborhood grant.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. My apologies. I was waited this whole time, and then my internet failed me, so I apologize. So as was included in your packet, we had five applications for the beautifier neighborhood grant for this year's funding. And the Community Development Committee reviewed all of those at their April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one meeting. The neighborhoods that were included in this application round were Bishop's Crossing, Riverside Woods, Sabona, Taraza, and Windup Woods. On the total grant request of these five applications combined was twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars out of a total of thirty-two thousand dollars available. So we were able to use a majority of the money within that. And the Community Development Committee recommended approval of all these grant application requests. So with that, we are requesting council's approval this evening.
Thanks, Jenny. I want to check in with Lindsay. Have we received any public comment relative to this business?
We have not, mayor.
Ma'am? Council questions, discussion?
I just want to thank all the community leaders who put forth the effort to beautify their neighborhoods. I know it's sort of a hassle to go through all the paperwork and the bids and the forms, but they all did it. And just thank you to everybody who participated in this from around Dublin to make our community a prettier place. So, and thank you, the community members, Chris and Andy.
Jenny, I assume we'll have a second round, being that there are, there is funding, there is residual funding available?
Yeah, we can look and see with the total amount, yeah, if there's any other neighborhoods out there that would want to submit and use the rest of those funds.
Okay, anything else? Any comments? No? I'll make a motion to accept the Community Development Committee recommendations regarding approval of the beautify your neighborhood grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, John. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Amros Rooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Great, thanks, Jenny. Okay, we'll go back to Allison for the V C R C Talus waiver or price.
It's actually, so the Columbus Fesh, it started in Columbus, I think it's now thirty-six years ago. And in their early years, they moved up to what was Dublin High School. And I think many of you know that the Irish Festival started as the after-party to the Fesh, and it's just really kind of grown from there. They have been at the school since nineteen eighty-eight, so they've been at Kaufman High School for many years. But unfortunately, I think a lot due to the fact that schools seems to keep starting earlier and earlier. Schools ask that they not use their site anymore. So we are still looking for a site for the future. But this year, because the Irish Festival doesn't need the rec center, they have looked at the rec center, and the rec center will fit their needs for this year. So we don't exactly know all the rooms exactly yet, but we estimate the range to be anywhere from three to five thousand. It's probably going to be closer to the lower end of that. In the past, they have paid the schools, but the city has also paid four thousand dollars to enhance the air conditioning at the schools. It was a bed tax request many years ago, and instead it was put into community events budget. So most of those families that do come for the Columbus Fesh, they're usually at about eight hundred to a thousand competitors. Do stay in our Dublin hotels. They work with Visit Dublin to get different packages, and they're at the various hotels. So they did make a request to see if they could get some reduced or waived funding for this year's event, being that it is, you know, coming after a year, they had to cancel last year. And they're really not sure exactly where they're going to be in the future, and they don't exactly know how many people they might get this year. So that was the request, and I can answer any questions about that.
Great, thanks, Allison. Lindsay, have we received any public comment relative to this topic?
No, ma'am.
Uh, council questions, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question, and maybe I missed it on here. Are they going to be using that during the time that the Irish Festival is, what we're having a little Irish Festival? It will be at the same time.
They actually, they, because we will start on Saturday at four o'clock. That's usually about when they're wrapping up. So there will be a little bit of an overlap on Saturday. Friday night, they just use it for setup. So we're probably think there might be an hour or so overlap of the nighttime concerts, but that would be it.
Well, I don't think there's a problem with the overlap. In looking, I wasn't as familiar with what they do, but their competitions, everything is Irish oriented. They're dancing, their arts and crafts, woodworking, their photography. Is it open to the public?
You know, it's funny, because normally it is at the high school. They don't get a ton of visitors. They mostly get, you know, grandmas and aunts and uncles and parents. This one, because they're going to have to sort of discourage some extra viewing, because there's just not the space. You know, so example, back when they were at the high school and the big gym, they would have six stages going at once, but they have the bleachers, so people would sit on the bleachers. You don't have that same kind of setup. Well, they'll have three stages in the community hall, but there's really enough room for the parents and, you know, just the kids that are competing.
Yeah, it's really a shame that that couldn't be part of the entertainment for the weekend, because it's so wonderful. I, I mean, is that possible that they could do some things outdoors, maybe even in the amphitheater, or you have space for that?
We did talk about, actually, what they normally do is they have what they call the parade of champions. So the boys and girls, I say that, but a lot of them are, you know, high school kids as well. Those that are the winners, they come and represent always at the Irish Festival at the amphitheater. So we're going to ask them again to come and perform at the concerts that night, just so there's always that little taste of, you know. And it's great when you see that parade of champions, because you see the littlest ones, and then you see, you know, the seniors in high school.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be a joy to share with the community, so the best way you could. So absolutely, I think that's wonderful that they're going to be there, located there. All right, thanks, Allison.
Others? Okay, hearing Tom, make a motion to waive the rental fees for the V C R C Talus. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thanks, Jane and Andy. Jenny, would you call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Rooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to staff comments. I think they might have a few items for us, perhaps. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening again. I have a few, yes. The first one is, I sent a memo to council last week, and we have posted it for public view regarding changes to events, camps, pools, and the rec center based on changes lifting restrictions and guidelines relative to COVID nineteen and the pandemic. Many of those have been covered tonight with Allison's comments and the Irish Festival. However, just real quick, I'll highlight a few things. Independence Day, we do plan to go back to a in-person parade on the traditional route. There'll be some limitations relative to handout of candy and brochures and things like that, limiting touch points, if you will. We are making necessary adjustments to take our concert back into Kaufman Stadium as one concert, as opposed to two separate venues. As you can imagine, we have not been able to secure what we would consider a national act, but we have secured several local bands, some pretty popular ones. So I think we'll still have a, have a great time. We will still do what, we will do our traditional fireworks show following that. So it's a significant return to normal. One of the things we're changing though is the size of tables for renting. We will, we will rent sixty-inch round tables for eight people instead of the seventy-two-inch round tables for ten. I don't mean rent, but sell the tables for that evening. Sales will be online for the, for the most part, so watch for that. I won't go back over the Irish Festival. I think you've heard all things that have changed there, with the exception of the concert venue in the south part of Kaufman Park that Allison referred to. Rather than doing tables there, we're going to do more of an open lawn seating, which will allow many more to attend those concerts. So blankets and chairs and things like that, people can bring, and then they can buy tickets as well. Changes to the rec, recreation programs. We are really opening up the rec center more so as normal. So you'll see that, although a lot of great lessons learned about online and, and be able to push rec programming out, if you will. So we'll continue to, to leverage those kinds of things. So there's lots of information in the memo about that. Outdoor pools returning to normal operations, again, starting this weekend, as we traditionally do with Memorial Day weekend. And no more blocking, if you will, or scheduling in blocks. We'll be opening up as normal. We're doing that a couple of days ahead of the June second announcement by the governor, but this is following suit with many other cities in the area as well. So we're consistent with what, what others are doing. And the reason for that is to start one way, and then just a couple of days later, switch to other way of conducting business would just be counterproductive. We'd rather stay closed than do that. So we're going to side on the CDC and the guidance from the state that, you know, we can, we can do this safely and in a way that protects everyone. Summer camps, we will impose certain restrictions and guidelines similar to what remain for schools. Although what we've heard from our parents wanting to put their kids in camps are actually relieved by that and glad that we are conducting it that way, you know, until more and more kids can get access to vaccine. And we have been able, while we've closed enrollment, we have been able to accommodate all children on all the wait lists, which is exciting to see. So that's, that's just sort of the highlights. There's a lot more information in that memo and much more specifics. But I think the key thing is we are celebrating getting open again, and I just want you and the public to understand that we as staff want to be as open and back to normal as anybody. So we're trying to lean forward on that and push that envelope as much as we can and do that safely. Of course, we still want to promote for people, to people that, you know, sanitizing, sanitization procedures, as we've been promoting. Stay home if you feel sick. If you've not been vaccinated, maintain social distance and wear a mask if you're not vaccinated. Even if you are vaccinated, you know, we ask that you just be careful when in large crowds. And of course, we want to promote and suggest people do seek vaccination. So that'll be part of what we'll be pushing as well. So good news on that front. I hope you agree. The other thing related to that is the internal operations. I, I sent a memo to council today that we'll be sharing with staff starting tomorrow about how we will very much open up our internal operations at facilities, other city facilities to the public as well, also starting on May twenty ninth, consistent with these other orders that we're going to follow. So very happy to do that. Also, sort of consistent with this is the opening of the North Pool, which will happen this weekend. We'll have a bit of a ribbon cutting on Friday evening, and then the pool opening completely on Saturday. So very excited about that. We thank all of our residents in the area for their putting up with any inconvenience during the construction. Also want to thank Dublin City Schools. What an incredible partnership with them, because you know, that's, that North Pool is co-located with Windup Elementary, and they have just been champs in putting up with any inconvenience and also helping us to get the pool open. Want to thank Jeff Stark, Facilities Operations Manager there, and John Marshhausen, the new superintendent, for all the support on allowing us to access their private hydrant. You wouldn't think that's a big deal, but it's a big deal when you're trying to build, fill a bunch of big pools. So that really helps us out. that really helps us out. So all things seem to be systems go for next weekend, this weekend, rather. We hope that sticks. One other quick announcement is River Crossing Park. You may have noticed by now that we'll have a memo, I think in your city manager update packet tomorrow, talking about how we're gradually opening up River Crossing Park. We did open up the public restrooms on the plaza to help with Dora, actually, over the weekend. So I heard that was welcome. And there's other information in that memo about how we will gradually open up other components of the park throughout the rest of the year as those venues become available. And then in the next spring, as lawn gets established and we're able to get the whole park open. So a good plan, I think there. Things running on time as we had hoped. So that's all the great news. I think a lot of good stuff and very hopeful for a good summer coming up and and going on the rest of the year. So unless you have any other questions or comments, that's, that's all I have.
All right. Questions for Dana?
Thanks. I know I have received a lot of questions about the fireworks. That seems to be the that seems to be the sacred ground that people are wanting to make sure happens. So thanks for staff. I know there's a lot of work to to switch gears, as it were, on a lot of those things and certainly appreciate their efforts.
Okay, um, there's Jenny Delgado sent out a memo or an email to you all today relative to how we'll go with council reports and liaison reports moving forward to help streamline these this time. So welcome feedback, but we're going to give it a shot tonight and get through these. So we're here, committee reports, and we'll start with the admin committee. And these will be done, I believe, in the second meeting of each month.
Great, thank you very much. I just have one thing for the admin committee. As folks may know, the admin committee is responsible for working with our boards and commissions. And so I wanted to take a moment tonight to express our deepest sympathies to the Gasson family. We lost one terrific member of our CSAT group, Mr. Gary Gasson recently. And he is just an incredible supporter volunteer to the community and he will be greatly missed. And we just wanted to take this opportunity to send our regards and sympathies to the family. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks Kathy. Community Development Committee, John?
See you all tomorrow night at six o'clock. Be there.
Thanks John. Finance Committee, Christina?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
And Public Services, Jane?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. We'll go to liaison reports, Jane, for planning and zoning commission Dublin Bridges and Washington Township.
Okay, um, just quickly, the planning and zoning committee did an informal review of a hundred and two square foot. I mean, square foot, single family development at the corner of Post Road and Highland Croy. Think you're familiar with that. That was the one that came before us before. And it gave the planning and zoning commission gave it generally supportive, supportive of the layout and of a single family development, but there is a historic farmstead there that is considered to be preserved through a cultural assessment, historic cultural assessment. So staff is looking and further looking at recommendations on its preservation. Another one was an acceptance of a final development plan for all, all our friends, adult care facility at the corner of Parkwood and Emerald Parkway. And as recorded earlier tonight, PNZ reviewed the Towns on the Parkway final development plan, which has been a fourteen month review by planning and zoning and they felt very good about, as you mentioned, Chris, when you spoke to the applicant. They did listen to many of the suggestions that Planning and Zoning Commission made, which were numerous over the fourteen months. And the final product is well done. So that's pretty much the planning and zoning quick overview.
Anything on bridges and township?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Bridges is sending out gift cards for grads for those seniors to honor those seniors who may be most in need and not receiving something. You can always donate to that. And then the second thing, they're asking for donations. They're doing the snacks for students again, beginning June fourth through July, which is a week's worth of snacks that they hand out every Friday for those who receive free school lunches and breakfasts. So donations are being requested on their website, which is neighborhoodbridges.org. And Washington Township, they had a cooperative vaccination event on May eighteenth between the city and Washington Township for township employees and their families. They gave twenty eight vaccinations. They're testing this that it's possible that in the future, they may do some of the booster vaccinations for the city and the township. So they were really pleased with that event. It went very smoothly. And they are also wanted to report that they are receiving money to rebuild Rings Road through Amlin. They have a five hundred thousand dollar grant and a million dollar loan and they will be redoing that Rings Road section through Amlin. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Kathy, thirty three corridor?
We meet in June. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you. Andy, Logan Union Champagne and US thirty three?
Nothing to report.
Sir. John, you have anything further on the Arts Council or Veterans Committee?
The, the Colonel gave a pretty good report. I just want to make you aware that the the memorial, honor roll memorial is what it's called for World War Two veterans is now in place in Veterans Park. If you haven't had a chance to see it, commemorates all the local men and women who served in World War Two. Also, the Purple Heart thing is moving forward and I had heard that the Dublin Bridge would be lit in purple somewhere around July twenty sixth and August seventh to honor those veterans who won the Purple Heart. And since golf week is coming up, back over to the Dublin Arts Council. If a great exhibit and well-done painting. So if you get a chance, make an appointment, stop in there. Thank you.
Great, thanks John. Greg, Board of Education?
Last day of school is Friday, other than that's all you need to know.
Unless you're a senior, it's tomorrow. So that's very exciting around our house. Okay, and Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission, I did attend the Amtrak presentation that the Columbus Metropolitan Club put on last week. So we'll have a lot of discussion about trains, loops and automobiles, not planes. We won't be talking about planes, but trains, loops and automobiles. And that's a conversation. Um, okay, we'll bring us to round screen. I will start in the top center of mine, which is Christina.
Thanks. I don't have much. Definitely my condolences to the Gasson family. Gary has been a staple in this community and I have gotten to know Barb very well over the years as well. So my heart goes out to them. Otherwise, I hope everybody has a good last week of school.
Andy?
I've got nothing tonight.
Sir, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Jane?
I don't have anything. I'm just really happy. We're starting to get back to normal and I thank the staff for getting us there. So looking forward to a good summer.
Greg?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Kathy?
Great. I just want to echo Jane's comment. I mean, the staff has done a tremendous job throughout the pandemic and there's a significant amount of work to, to go back to normal on certain things and we appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to seeing everybody at that North Pool. Thanks.
I am thrilled that we will only have one more virtual council meeting. This is, I thank you all for your patience. It's been difficult to operate a meeting sitting here in my office by myself and try to figure out what in the world is going on. So certainly appreciate your patience, the patience of staff and the community of our want them to know that we have done our best in this space and it has been imperfect as it has been. It has been our best attempt and we hope that we serve them well in the midst of that process. I too send my heartfelt thanks to the Gasson family and I tell you, Gary, he was always fast with a joke and you didn't know what it was going to be, but it was going to be funny. So those jokes will certainly be missed. Just send them Barb and her son that our, our best wishes for sure. And with that, if there's nothing further for the good of the order, we will stand adjourned and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks Maria.
Maybe my last night with you all. Good night.